Zoom or whatever. Burgess. Phil Travis Craig. Was it your fantasy playoffs or something, Burgess? Was it your fantasy playoffs or something? We're gonna dumb you out if y'all show up this time.
I got it. I got it, thank you.
Just sit, just sit and listen, alright? Alright. Alright, I'm gonna open the meeting at six thirty-seven. Sorry, uh, sorry for the delay, but out of twelve members, I need seven to show up. I got six here and I got one on the phone. So, finally have a quorum so we can start. Alright, so first item on the agenda, sixth grade leadership students. Alright, so, before we get started, I spoke to a couple of you guys beforehand, I'm gonna say it again to everybody. Talk loud, okay? We can't hear you, it's loud, TV needs to hear you, stuff like that. So first things first, give us your name and what school you go to. Alright?
We are the sixth grade leadership club.
Louder.
Uh, oh, sorry. We are the sixth grade leadership club.
Perfect.
I am Simone.
I'm Evelyn, from WCES.
Uh, I'm Noah from WVES.
I'm Noah from WVES.
I'm Sarah from WVES.
Perfect. If you think you're talking too loud, you're not, alright?
Last week we had the Light, um, Light the Night decorating.
And, um, sort of, um.
Louder.
We used donated materials and we, we built it, we built it all together. Uh, and then after we enjoyed hot chocolate and cookies.
The, uh, leadership students from WCES and WVES brainstormed the idea of the trees and presents.
So, some leadership jobs from WCES is peer role model positions in K through four. Some leadership jobs in WCES are peer role model positions in K through four classrooms. Tasks include practicing math facts and reading aloud.
Another job is recycling and podcast.
Alright, uh, for the White Christmas Craft Fair, we sold raffle tickets to raise money for the WVES PTG and we helped clear up after the event.
The LSRS and Classic Book Fair helped younger kids shop so they can get fun books to read and help them read and improve reading levels. And we had been tasked, we had tasks of changing messages. Oh.
Like, on the side, like, on the side of the Miss Provost's, on, on like the, in the, uh, on the outside of the store, you know what I'm talking about, uh, Miss Provost helped us know what's right.
Gigi's visit to WCES and W E B E, uh, W B E S. As Gigi visited, it both elementary schools.
Uh, it was a celebration of the progress we had made and, uh, more than, to continue to try our best on the transatlantic math program, the year, the major year, the main year.
WCES awards were given to the highest achiever in each classroom.
WVES had a statewide ball thankfully challenge for reaching weekly puzzle goals. K through one, forty puzzles, and two to six, sixty puzzles. When we reached our goal, we colored a leaf and it was hung up on the bulletin board. All leaves entered into a giant prize.
Do you know the school community know who Gigi is?
Gigi is the mascot for W, not Gigi. Huh, Gigi is the mascot for SD Mac.
SD Mac is basically a math program that we do on our computers for free time.
It kinda is like really fun to like learn, it's like an easier way and like it has more like color, it's kind of like, it's a little bit more motivational because like the little pink one gives you basically more motivation as well.
It's fun.
It's, it's fun.
Classified math is fun.
And you're not sitting there with the teacher just blabbering at you.
That'd be the sixth grade teachers that were blabbing, right?
Math and science.
I think that's it.
Any questions?
Is that it? Is that last slide?
That's it.
Alright, so I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
So for you guys at Warren, so the podcast, what's the podcast about?
So the podcast is a, like, broadcast that we do every morning. It, well, sometimes we do it, but.
It's a daily video.
Mostly every morning, uh, it announces the food that is, that food that we are having for lunch. It mentions the national day, there's special days, like, uh, Teacher Top Thursday and Workout Wednesday. I'm not, I don't know much about it because I'm just the main assistant for it.
So is it like broadcast, are you like on TV or is it just on like over the loudspeaker?
It's a daily video.
Uh-huh, it's a daily video.
We normally film it every day before.
Okay. So you can't do the weather because you don't know if the weather's gonna affect it. And so for you guys at Westbrookfield, so I, I know one of Miss Provost's favorite thing to do was to change that sign out front. She did not like to do that at all. I will give you one piece of information, one little hint, bring boots. She said she would go out there and she would step in something mucky and go right up her leg and then she had wet feet all day and that, she just didn't like that at all. But my question to you is, do you get to put whatever you want on the sign?
Uh, no, she usually picks out a little bit of it.
She tells you exactly what to put on it?
Yeah.
Alright. You guys did a good job. Anybody have any questions?
You guys did a great job.
Alright. So is this, so is this, so is this part of your duty to be on leadership, like you have to come and talk this with them? So we're gonna get to see everybody from leadership?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, well, thanks guys. Hey, how many days till school break? Should I have to think about that? Alright, so next up on the agenda, so now, listen guys, I told you guys how to talk loud?
Okay.
You gotta listen, you gotta listen to these two, okay? So these are our twelfth grade seniors from our student advisory council, so they tell us what goes on at the high school. Alright?
Okay.
Floor is yours.
Thanks. So, um, as you heard before, we had the Light the Night, the Warren and Westbrook, sorry, Warren and West Warren held the Light the Nights and the each grade was able to decorate the front areas and you'll be able to watch that as they drive by. We don't know who won yet, so feel free to vote for twelfth grade. Um, okay, winter sports. Um, boys' basketball started off their season last Monday and they had a hard fought win against Oxford. And girls' basketball has already played three games, they played one over the weekend and two last week. And they start out their season one, two, and zero. Um, and track had their first meet last Wednesday against Wilbraham, Munson Academy, Grafton, and David Proudy. And we had a lot of students placing first, second, and third. Um, Bella Grobert placed first in hurdles, so congrats to her. Um, National Junior Honor Society held the annual breakfast with Santa. This switches off every year between NHS and NJHS and this year is NJHS's turn. And it was very successful, they had a good amount of people that came, they had plenty of volunteers, um, and we wanted to thank all the teachers that helped out because that's always a big help, coming early in the morning and doing that, so, yeah. And then we also had the advisory meeting for the awards for seventh, twelfth, for, for second and third honors. So congratulations to all the students that, uh, qualified for those. And then we also gave out the superintendent scholar to Kenny Sloan for being the valedictorian, oh, sorry, for the highest UPA for the class of twenty twenty-four, so congratulations to her. Um, our junior class organized a muffin fundraiser in order to raise money for, not just the junior dinner, it's a lot of stuff. Um, and they sold four different kinds of muffins that they made at actually the Cedar Street Cafe, they all went down and helped make them. And they sold over seven hundred muffins, which is insane, that's a lot of muffins to make. And, um, they made a good amount of money from that, so that's gonna help them out. And then Mr. Duff is gonna talk about the calendar fundraiser.
Just real quick, one of the topics that came up at our, at our last two school committee, uh, meetings was the ability for students to participate in the eighth grade Washington DC trip. We did a calendar raffle where typically if a student sells a calendar for ten dollars, five dollars goes to help offset the cost of the trip. We did have an anonymous donor from the community who paid for the entire payout of the raffle. So what we were able to do for our eighth graders was every calendar they sold, rather than setting, offsetting the cost of their trip by five dollars, it actually offset their trip by ten dollars. So if students were able to sell eighty raffle tickets, or their parents were able to sell eighty raffle tickets, I'll be honest about that, um, then it would have paid for the trip itself. Um, so we're very, uh, thankful for that anonymous donor from the community that paid for the entire raffle so that students would have the ability to offset the trip even more.
And then Mrs. Youngberg's APR history class took a field trip to the Worcester Art Museum on the eighth and you were able to, um, go to the museum for free and do a scavenger hunt and just spend the day there. And then for the kids that take APR, or sorry, AP psychology, we also went to Clark University and saw the Susan Freud statue. There's a lot of artists, um, whose work that we study and who had pieces in this, so we were able to see some similar works to what we're doing in class. Thanks to Isaac West Company for not charging us as well, making that possible. Um, the John Abigail Adams Scholarship, during the seniors' honors assembly, uh, Mr. Urban and Mr. Handfield presented the students who had a high academic achievement on NCAS exams with this scholarship and it's a great achievement for all those students and we want to congratulate them. There was a good amount of students that got it this year too, so.
There's a lot of kids in that picture.
There's a lot of kids in that picture. Um, the morning announcements, we've upgraded to Quivog TV, which is a live stream on YouTube where, um, teachers can live stream it from their classrooms on their projectors. And, um, our juniors run this, uh, and they said that they're looking to expand these announcements even further by hopefully adding in an advice column and even potentially having different student guests come on and talk about different things. So that's really cool, we're actually doing it right over there and, um, it's, it's been a really great success so far. The holiday concert is gonna be held at Quivog on December twenty-first at six thirty and both the Quivog band and chorus will be performing and make sure to stop by and support our Quivog music department. And I think that's it. Any questions?
The holiday concert, I think that's Thursday, right?
I got a question.
Yeah.
Have any of you guys forgotten your room school yet?
Yeah.
Is he, yes, and that's a solid.
I'm working on it, guys, I'm working on it. Maybe, I'll go back to that, uh, a few months.
Okay. Hannah, you gonna share, what else are you going?
Um, I'm attending Boston University, um, for their doctor, uh, doctor of physical therapy program.
Fantastic. And we'll wait for candles.
Yeah, don't worry, I know when I get it out.
Okay. I, I have a question real quick, so the, the lighting contest.
Yeah.
Where do we vote?
I, can we still vote?
Can, can we still vote?
Yeah, until, uh, oh, actually no, voting is done, voting is placed over the weekend.
Okay.
Always drive, you just drive by.
Okay.
You can't even really see the, um, like, displays anymore when it's raining or raining, but they were pretty good.
Alright then.
And not seniors, but the rest were good.
Alright, thanks guys. Alright, so. So no Kennedy?
Kennedy is not here.
Kennedy is not here, alright, so we're gonna put her on next month's meeting agenda. Alright, so. No, it's not Kennedy. Alright. Alright, so, so Mrs. Durico, you're gonna teach us how to, uh, how to invest our 401K, right guys? I heard you guys, uh. Alright, so, so first things first, right, same thing as, same thing as the little kids, name and grade. We know where you go, you know?
Isaiah Flores, eleventh grade.
Richard Tracy, eleventh grade.
Daniel Hobart, eleventh grade.
Mr. Durico, finance teacher, personal finance teacher. I just wanna introduce the kids, um, saying how proud I am for winning the annual stock market challenge. Their team name was Buy Low Sell High, they did awesome, uh, so it's an annual event I took my students to, so I'm here to tell you all about it. Very proud of them.
I let Mr. Durico pick her name because I didn't think we were gonna win, so I didn't think it could matter and I'm kind of excited to change it, it's like, funny. It, it did.
That's what you get for letting a teacher make the decision.
She was like, what's your name? And I was like, hey.
Is that how it happened?
Yeah.
The only you actually made one, it was a, you actually did it really good, obviously, in first place.
Yeah.
The event, I would say it was pretty fun, I didn't think it was gonna be like anything massive, definitely bigger than I thought it was. They gave us free food, free shirts, it was nice, great incentive to go.
Show off, show off the shirt.
The shirt? Yeah, it's the shirt.
A bunch of stuff like that.
All the, all, was it all the teams or the shirts?
Yeah, no, it's like a bunch of sponsors that contribute.
Oh.
They get a million dollars fictitious bankroll to invest in stocks and we do the research on the stocks prior to the event. And, um, if they buy the stocks prior to that, there, there's no commission. And that day they look for IPOs, it simulates a real stock exchange. There's sixty trading days in the event.
Yeah.
Sixty minutes.
And sixty seconds is each trade. So they did great, they were kind of behind in, what was the secret to your success?
We ended up targeting like energy and defense companies because when we would run the game in Mr. Rico's class, typically those would end up getting like extra deals like halfway through or just stocks ended up soaring up. So we just mainly targeted those, those were like safe, reliable bets. And then, I wanna say about halfway through, we had around a hundred grand left, fictitious grand. And we used it on Microsoft, which had a dividend date, which ended up putting us over the top around day fifty-seven-ish.
So how many teams did you guys compete against?
Seventy-two. Seventy-two. Seventy-one, seventy-two.
Seventy-two teams.
Yeah, twelve schools, Wilbraham, Munson Academy, and the very.
We barely invested before, so like they said, spend half of your money, so spend five hundred thousand before the event, we barely did that. Richard made me set, sell all of the ones I invested in before because none of them were doing good. Um, so yeah, we only spent like, I don't know, probably fifty grand, seventy, hundred grand before the event. Um, so it was honestly a miracle that we won, we had, we did not look very good at all. We started off pretty good, we were in like sixteenth and like out of, or maybe we were like twentieth and then soon we went to sixteenth and that's like really good against seven schools, um. And like over the course of the game, we kind of floated in the middle, we went up to eighth, we were there for a while, we went up to sixth and we stayed there for about like twenty minutes. And then we kept floating between fourth and fifth for the entire end. We were down to like the last seven minutes and we popped up to third. And we were staying in third and then for the last five minutes they cut us off, so we couldn't see the scoreboard at all. And we just had to kind of like guess and we were like, we're going to get third, there's no way we're gonna get, we're not gonna get third. Um, so at least we'll get something. So, everything ended, Mr. Durico won. She, she said, we're not winning anything, so we're, we're just gonna go out to the buses.
Didn't have faith in the kids.
Um, uh, whose mom was it?
It was Ruthier.
Ms. Ruthier.
We had to, we had to tell Ms. Ruthier that we were like top three, so she didn't drag us out of there, almost left us.
I wanted to get home for the buses, so I went at the buses and I said, I'm gonna pull them forward and get them ready and then it's Ruthier told me, they won, they won. We were so excited.
No, she, uh, she came to get us and we were like, we're winning something, because the top three all got trophies. And we were like, well, we're winning at least something, so we wanna stay here again, and she was like, oh, okay, we'll stay, we'll stay. So they announced the fifth and fourth, it wasn't us. So we were like, okay, we're clear, we have third, it's like set, done, we're good. Um, then they announced third and it wasn't us, it was like something, some, like five word academy, something, and I was like, we all just like defeated, like def- defeated and we were like, we did not win anything, we got booted out at the last second. One of our stocks must have tanked us, because there was one team for the entire game had, what was it, like fifty percent ROI return on investment?
They, they jumped out at the beginning, like I wanna say day ten.
And they stayed at the top the entire time, so it was like we were not getting first, a hundred percent, we're not getting first. But then they announced, like, it was really chaotic, there was a lot of yelling, everyone was talking, um, and like the, they were taking pictures for the people in third place. And then they announced, like, the two, I don't even know what they said.
They announced the, the top two.
Yeah, the top two and it was us and it was another school that was, they were the same from the people that won third. Um, I, I don't know what school it is.
Yeah, I don't know.
Um, and we were like, oh my god, we got, we must have gotten second. Um, but there was, we still had no hope that, that we would be in first, that was like unbelievable. Um, and then they announced, and the runner-up is, and they announced that academy and we were like, we were confused because we couldn't really hear anything, so we were like, we didn't win, but Ms. Ruthier was like, they announced your name, so you had to win something. And like we couldn't quite piece it together and I didn't wanna say like, oh, I think we won, because I was like, if I say that, I'm gonna jinx it and then we're gonna get our hearts broken. Um, but I said, Natalie, we were like, I think we won, I think we won, we were like, and the winners are, and they announced our name and all I could hear after that was these three yelling. I distinctly heard Isaiah just yell, let's go, and like at the top of his face went red. Um, and like after that, it was kind of just like, we went up, we got our pictures taken and Ms. Ruthier was so supportive, she was like, oh my god, that's why, that's so great. She was so sweet. But no, it was, it was honestly unbelievable that we won, because we didn't, we went into it like, there's so many people from other schools that have probably practiced this more, the teachers have been like, you have to do this, you have to do this, and Ms. Durico's been supportive, but we barely invested, yes, we barely invested before the game, so it was like, we didn't have, we didn't have much hope.
So I got one question, one big question is, how many kids went, so how many other teams from this school did you guys beat too?
There was a mess.
I would say a little over three hundred and seventy students.
There was a mess of, what, six to eighteen, is it five or six to eighteen?
They had top tables and they had to call traders over, there were, there were sponsors for the event and they volunteered. If they wanted to trade or buy or sell, they had to call a trader over, it really simulated a real, you know, actual stock exchange before everybody went digital. Um, but it was great and I couldn't be in the room without it to help them at all, they had to do everything on their own, happy and, we practiced quite a bit before we went to. So, yeah, it was very kind of them.
I couldn't, we couldn't kind of get you to be like, Mr. Durico, we're in third, we're gonna win, so you just took off. Um, yeah, so we, we were all, it was kind of cramped, honestly, because it was like, there was no space, like if you backed up, I was going straight into target, really. There was no, no getting around people, um. And it was so funny to see the difference in some of our teams, because we had like three teams from Quivog that were up in the top ten and for some of them, they were like, I was top twenty, and then there'd be some that would be like straight to bottom. So I think it was, we got first, but I think our school out of like, what, twelve schools got like seven.
Well, the other teams that I brought placed, um, as well, I have the list, I can show you all the different, uh, rankings from all the teams. Yeah, a lot of our teams did well, so.
It was fun to get out.
Dan, did you have anything to say?
I mean, we took the win home, we crossed out, every last round, we won. We were very last round, I won the fair.
You ever second guess yourself, just listen to Richard, right? He's always talking about.
So you guys wanna get junior accounts and start trading for real? No, seriously?
Probably not.
Give it, give it a good couple of months and maybe I'll feel confident enough, because these are real money. If I'm giving another million fake dollars that can turn into real, then sure. But I don't think that's gonna happen.
I'm not gonna, the entire event, all I did was like, I wrote on our little tickets, because we had to write down which stocks we wanted to buy and how much. So I wrote on those and then I written after people to go get, to go exchange. But Richard chose like all the stocks, because I had no clue which one was which. He was like, this is the one to invest in and this is the one to invest in, and then he's like, we have to sell your hundred stocks in Cartopia and it broke my heart.
It was intense, right? Was it, yes, definitely. What about you, Isaiah?
Uh, I'm just glad that we got a free pizza party after.
But we won a mini contest too.
Yeah.
They turned in all their surveys early, Ruthier was a volunteer, I brought her, was a helper. And, um, she got them to turn their surveys in, so we got a free pizza party for, uh, sixty-five kids. In my St. Finance classes, yeah.
Even though they didn't start to go.
They did?
Yeah, and then she did it, they get back.
I don't know how we got it, the last ones in there.
It was fun to get out.
Yeah, it was a good trip.
Hi, Richard is your financial advisor.
Am I, I guess my only question was, what was the final winning ROI?
Thirty-five point nine four percent.
Yeah.
Wow, I was gonna say thirty-six.
I didn't know, we're very good.
I don't, I know, how she knows that off the top, right? No, they literally, they had double our ROI, like, the team that was above us the whole time, they had double hours going into like the last five days and they just tanked somehow. As soon as they cut the leaderboard, I don't know what happened. I'm not gonna complain, I'm not gonna complain.
It wasn't the biggest event in the world, but it was like, we were all like ant- antsy.
Yeah.
Skinny, kind of like, are we going to win, are we gonna win the trophy home? We said we had to do this for Mr. Durico.
We had one.
We hadn't won a trophy in a while, so we needed to get one in the day.
Yeah, the first live one they had, it's COVID, I won, uh, maybe four or five years ago, last year. So thank you. It's awesome.
I do, Gigi, our quote for the newspaper should be, it's called Mr. Durico, and I don't think he said that.
Oh, that's nice. They're the best kids in the country.
Well, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Do you get to keep it, like, you get to share it or like?
I send her.
Alright, Mr. Duff, you are up.
Alright, so for the superintendent's report meeting with Warren Select Board, um, both finance director, um, Barrow Wagner and I attended the Warren Select Board meeting, um, last week. Uh, and we discussed our budget process moving forward, we discussed, uh, the things that Quivog are doing to help support our community like Light the Night, Singing at the Tree event, we are gonna be doing some caroling at both, um, Quivog and the common and hopefully at Brookhaven probably, uh, end of this week to spread some holiday cheer. This morning NHS made cards for, um, the senior citizens that are living within those facilities, so they get a Christmas card from Quivog as well. We discussed our budget, we discussed our, uh, meetings that we are gonna have, I did send correspondence to both Westbrookfield and Warren, following our budget subcommittee meeting the other night, articulating what days our meetings will be on. I did let the select board and, um, and the general public know that these are public meetings and that we do discuss the school budget and the school committee is responsible for approving the school budget. I discussed that we're trying to do a draft budget early in February and allow the school committee time to look at that budget and then have a finalized budget in March. I told them that, you know, our budget is a necessity budget, it's not a nicety budget, that we're gonna put, put forward a number that supports our students, but is also mindful of what's going on in the past. So they were very happy about that. Uh, I also put forward a capital improvement plan that we discussed with the building administrators and Mr. Estrella that articulated Warren and Quivog, because Westbrookfield would get Westbrookfield Elementary School and Quivog. Where Warren's primarily responsible for Warren Elementary and then fifty-eight percent of Quivog. Westbrookfield's responsible for Westbrookfield Elementary and forty-two percent of Quivog. Um, so we did put together a capital improvement plan for, uh, those two buildings, we also had one for Westbrookfield that was shared with the town of Westbrookfield. From there, uh, we did talk about the Green Community Grant, uh, that's going, that is currently almost complete at Warren Elementary School and we're in a pretty good position for that. So I would say that that meeting went really well, the other thing that I did bring up to, uh, the town administrator and to the board of selectmen was that we had a thirty-one hundred dollar bill for the generator, uh, the generator at Quivog is used as a shelter. board of selectmen was that we had a thirty-one hundred dollar bill for the generator. Uh, the generator at Quabog is used as a shelter for Warren. And we had a generator issue that we had to have it repaired. And today it actually came in handy, because we lost electricity today up here. And some lights that were functioning, uh, in the town was agreeable to help pay for some of it. Uh, so we are gonna submit the bill to the town of Warren. Um, they did ask whether there were funds that were available. And the town manager thought that there were, were some funds to help offset the cost of the generator. So Mr. Estrella and I will forward that and, uh, Ms. Wagner will forward that to the town of Warren. Um, and I said, you know, even if we went fifty-fifty on it, anything helps. And they seemed agreeable to that, because it is, uh, it is a, um, the school is a shelter. I did reach out, I spoke with it, within the building and budget subcommittee, I did reach out to Representative Smalla. We also reached out to MEMA, because it is a shelter, to see if there are any grants out there that could help offset that cost, but unfortunately they aren't. So I did report that back to the town. Uh, the IVAC grant, the IVAC grant is a three hun- roughly three hundred and four thousand dollar grant that we had had last year. We did submit the application again this year. So we still have the grant. We had to resubmit the paperwork this year. We could only do one, um, IVAC, we could only do one HVAC project at a time. Last year it was Warren and we're still continuously working on that. This summer it will be Quabog. Um, so we submitted all the paperwork for that. We're just waiting to hear back from Desi. And as soon as we hear back on that, we will be good to go. And that'll be a summer project. Uh, food service audit, we do have our food service audit coming up December twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second. Later in the agenda, under new business, there is a, a meal charging policy that, uh, we're gonna hopefully be able to adopt tonight to help address the food service audit. Niasc update, we are doing our initial review for Niasc. We'll put together our committees. We'll have a formal visit in the spring, uh, to talk about what the process will be looking, look at, look like. Niasc now is much different than it was in the past, where they come and they wanna look at a lot of documentation. They're gonna come and they're gonna have conversations with staff, identify areas of strengths and weaknesses, and then allow us to work on our weakness. They're not looking to put us on warning like they have in the past. They're looking for ways that we can continuously improve the way we're delivering instruction to students and the success that our students are having. Um, so it was kind of refreshing to hear that different mindset from Niasc. So that'll be upcoming over the next couple of years, but the process has begun. The Tyler ERP Pro Cloud update was the update that we spoke about at our last, uh, school committee meeting. There is a s- substantial cost with that. It's about an eighteen thousand dollar increase from what we're paying now. However, we talked about the benefits of being on a cloud, uh, to have our information secure, uh, to have the backups on real time. We're on our servers. If something happens with a server, if we have an updates, Windows update running in the background, that will throw your backup off, where this is, uh, continuously happening through Tyler ERP. We did discuss that we're in the middle of budget season, and it was my recommendation that we do not switch over to the iCloud during budget season. Um, just because if, if it's not as seamless as they're saying it's going to be, the worst time we can do that is in budget season. So we are gonna push this off until the summertime and we will include it in this fiscal year. Okay? And that's all I have for updates. Does anybody have any questions or superintendent's report?
Questions? Nope. All right. We do have one set of minutes from the November twentieth regular meeting. Um, anybody has any questions, additions, subtraction? So anything I saw Cindy was uh, administrative report under the student advisory council. Update, the third line, football had its last. I believe that was the last game that Wednesday. It wasn't a scrimmage, but it's the antics.
Question to approve, regular meeting minutes of November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, as amended.
Question made. And seconded. All right. Being a hybrid meeting, it has to be a roll call vote. Greg?
Upstand.
Dustin?
Aye.
Begging?
Aye.
Upstand.
Oh, upstand, I wasn't hearing, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Craig? Matt? Okay. Five oh two. Okay. All right. In the packet, uh, we have the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Annual Report. Uh, newsletter, the guardian lighting incentives, which we'll talk about a little bit in the building subcommittee, and the meal changing policy, which we'll talk a little bit in the policy update. I do have one question on the SWAC, uh, annual report. So somewhere in here it has like, uh, it's like the whole list of, you know, people, um, the governance and the members and everything like that. How current is this? Is this, is this a current document?
That's last year, last year's annual report.
Twenty-three, okay. I'd say, cause like I noticed like Maureen is here for the superintendent for Quabog and Dr. Esposito's Westbrook Field. Okay, so that's, that's
Last year's.
Last year's, okay. I always tend to get confused, twenty-three, twenty-four. I know we always work a year ahead, so, um, let's say. All right. Uh, financial business matters.
Um, so DLS and DUA, updates. DLS is, uh, the Department of Labor Services and, or Division of Labor Services. And DUA is the Department of Unemployment Assistance. There was paperwork that was, uh, that TMS was supposed to file throughout the time that they were here. Um, and unfortunately, they didn't file that paperwork on time. However, I have been in contact with Andy Pickett from TMS. We've been in com- uh, we've been in communication with the Division of Labor Services and the Department of Unemployment Assistance. We do owe about thirty-three hundred dollars, um, from what we would owe over the course of the last ten months. Um, but it, there won't be any fees or additional penalties to the school district. If there are any additional fees, that'll be for TMS to cover, um, because that was part of their responsibilities as the finance company. All right. So Beryl has been doing, Beryl and, uh, Chris DeJardin and Rob Meiner have been doing a spectacular job with that, um, staying on top of that. The budget schedule in our budget subcommittee meeting, I did wanna bring to the full school committee that Beryl Wagner and myself are starting to meet with building administration, with the facilities director and technology director and the director of student services. We will continue to meet with them until January eighth. We will have a building, um, sorry, a budget subcommittee meeting on January eighth and sixteenth with our building administrators and with our directors of, um, facility, technology and the director of student services. And we'll go through the line item budgets on the eighth and the sixteenth. On February fifth, I'll present, Beryl and I will present a draft budget to the budget subcommittee. Uh, compo- com- uh, composed of the information that we gather from our meetings. We'll put the draft budget together, present it to the budget subcommittee on the fifth, and we'll present it to the full school committee on February twelfth. That will be a draft budget. What we are looking for is for the full school committee to have the ability to digest the budget for a month. During that month, we'll have another, um, budget subcommittee meeting prior to our full school committee meeting. And if there are any adjustments that we have to make, we'll make that during that month. I also did let the towns know that we would provide them with the draft budget, so that they could look at it in case, in case they had questions. Um, one of the questions that came up was, when the school committee, my recommendation is the school committee approves our budget in March, even though we could wait until April. I don't think it's fair for the towns to not know what we're going into. So we, um, I, my recommendation would be the school committee approves the budget in March. And that's the budget that we move forward with, cause a lot of times we'll move a budget forward and then we have to reconvene. I think putting a budget forward that is our best budget is the highest priority that we can have. Um, otherwise, we're gonna follow that cycle that we've been doing for the last six years, where we have meeting after meeting and then we come back and do it.
Yeah, can I add something else?
Please.
So just for the people, and a lot of people that are here tonight were at the budget subcommittee meeting, we talked about that. But this was a lot of, we had a lot of conversation on this, this particular, in the timeline that Mr. Duff just laid out. And it was, we were pretty consistent with the, the thought process for the committee. Um, and a few of the highlights, just to, to really make sure everyone understands is, we know that the deadline got pushed because of when the town meetings are, but we didn't think, a- again, it was fair to wait till the very end. Um, that wasn't what we wanted to do. But we also wanted to take in considerations, concept of how in the past, we were forced to, you know, vote a budget in and then make adjustments. And we're trying to avoid that at all costs and have those conversations upfront. Uh, the other third piece, I think is very, I wanna make it significant. I'm saying it here now, I wish there were more people from the school committee here tonight to hear this, but uh, in the past, it was always burdened on this, on the budget subcommittee to do all the legwork, which is fine, we're doing that again this year. But then the full school committee really didn't have a lot of time to digest and, and, and provide feedback. And there've been times in the past where we were trying to make changes on the fly and it just didn't click. Doesn't, it, it's not a really good way to have a conversation or to try and solve a problem. So part of doing this is to make sure that by getting, taking the old timeline, but adjusting it to how we look at it, right? We were, we were doing this, the timeline's very similar to last year, but we were having to finalize vote. Like Mr. Duff said, this is a preliminary budget that the, that the school committee is going to hear. And the anticipation and the, and the, um, the expectation is that there'll be questions asked, there'll be other deeper dives. There'll be concepts and, and, and discussions throughout the full school committee, that we can all have a, you know, at the time that we do have the vote, it's something that we're all either for against, whatever it be, but that's the number and we're, and that's my, my meaning for it. So, hope you don't mind opening up a comment.
No, that was perfect. Well, then the town was provided those dates specifically, uh, both via email and in person.
So just one quick, uh, comment to what Jay and Steve just said is, you know, years past, we've always done our preliminary budget presentation. And then the following week, the school committee votes on the budget. And I think the budget subcommittee agreed that a week really isn't enough time for, you know, members of this committee that are not part of the budget subcommittee, that are, you know, meeting weekly, um, to digest that information. So that's why we kind of changed the, the timeline a little bit to give people time to, to read next questions, so. All right. Subcommittee updates. Mr. Morgan, budget.
I think we've pretty much covered everything or will be covering, uh, concepts that we talked about the other day, with the biggest ones. You know, we had our standard updates from SPED and from, um, food services and everything else that we would normally do. Um, we talked about the budget and we're gonna be talking about the, uh, transportation bid in the next few minutes. So I think we pretty much covered everything. Uh, the next meeting, again, I think we already talked about this, is January eighth, and that's gonna be the very first, uh, going through the line items for the budget, so, all welcome.
Okay. Mr. Lane Dean is not here personnel, but we are going to, uh, start having some internal discussions, I believe, starting the end of January, beginning of February, um, to start planning, uh, negotiations with the paraprofessionals, whose contract expires at the end of this year. Well, this year being June thirtieth. Greg, policy.
Uh, the only thing we have going on is to see, uh, annual charge policy for this group.
Okay. All right. Uh, building subcommittee, Mr. Burgess was not there. The building subcommittee spoke about, uh, pretty much a lot of things that Mr. Duff already talked about. The, uh, energy efficiency updates for both Quabog and Westbrook Field. The Warren community green, the Warren community elementary school green community update. Uh, so that HVAC project is almost finished. Uh, the generator, which, uh, thank you to the town of Warren for, uh, agreeing to, um, help in the payment of that, because that's, uh, every penny helps. Uh, gym lighting update at Quabog High School's been done. Uh, from what I understand, it is much brighter in the high school gym now. Um, the freezer update, that's all done, ready to rock and roll. Missy I'm sure is doing her best to stock it to its fullest. Uh, I don't believe we have a meeting for building scheduled for the eighth, do we?
We do not.
We do not. So we'll have a building schedule, a building subcommittee meeting scheduled to be determined. Um, all right. Regional agreement amendment committee did not meet. Uh, we do have to put a meeting on the agenda for, uh, the future.
Can I ask a question? Uh, on the eighth?
Correct.
Budget still at six-thirty or starting at six?
I believe budget was at six.
Budget started at six.
Yeah. All right, so on the eighth, budget is gonna be at six o'clock?
I would say both days, right?
Yeah, both days, it'll be six.
Yeah.
And I'll update it on, uh, uh, the, the website.
Okay.
At least a little half hour before.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. All right. New business.
Um, so we have been discussing the transportation bid. Beryl has been in the process of putting the bid together. Uh, there have been some discussions on, um, whether this will be the appropriate time to go out to bid or not, or if we're better off waiting till next year. Part of, uh, the discussion around that has been that this year, if we opt into our final year, so we opted in last year, we were under a fi- a three-year contract with two years to opt in. If we opt into that final year this year, it's a two percent increase, um, over last year. So if we go out to bid, then Beryl, we're checking legal on it, but if we go out to bid and we have bids that come in, whether we can decline those bids and opt in to the two percent. Because if we go out to bid and the bid comes back higher than two percent, which it may, two percent. Uh, I know it's, transportation's a huge, huge number, but two percent may be a lot cheaper than what the actual bid comes back at. So we're checking with legal. We do have the bid ready to go. We'll discuss it at the next budget subcommittee meeting. Um, and then we'll make a recommendation to the, to the full committee at that point. But I do wanna put it on the school committee's radar that, um, you know, it is a two percent increase next year, which may be easier than what that actual bid might come back at.
Right.
So I did talk to Mr. Duff about this, because I do know we have a, um, a gentleman who's looking at our transportation costs and routes and things like that. So I did ask Mr. Duff if he could reach out to, um, that individual to see if companies that have gotten new transportation bids this year, what is like the average increase in costs? Um, I'm gonna go with Mr. Duff, and I'm gonna figure that they're probably gonna be a little bit higher than a two percent increase. Um, just to keep that in the back of your mind, that, you know, two percent may be our, may be our best bet for this, for this year. Um, which would then give us, uh, another year to evaluate, so. All right. So the meal charging policy, uh, is included in the packet. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at it. Um, but basically, you wanna just summarize what it is, Mr. Duff?
So essentially, we, we need to update our meal charging policy, because we now, from now moving forward, we'll be um, providing free breakfast and lunch to all students. Uh, Governor Haley put that into law. Um, so what happens is because every student gets a free lunch or a free breakfast, any additional meals above and beyond the free one that we are obligated to give to our students, which I think is a great thing. Um, we can't, what Missy is recommending is that we don't allow students to charge on an account, because we are giving them free meals. Um, we've had difficulty in the past collecting those funds, and that's where we've kind of run into these problems. I haven't heard any pushback, uh, since we've been doing free breakfast and lunch, about students not being able to charge. They've always paid for their second meals moving forward, particularly at the middle high school. I haven't heard anything from the elementary buildings. Um, but when we have our audit coming up, it's important that we have a policy in place. So essentially, the policy says, every student will receive a free breakfast and a free, free lunch. If they want seconds, then they would pay what the price of the second meal is.
But I know in years past, when we did, used to have a charging policy and people had, you know, money, you know, you put money into the account. And when the account goes low, you know, you put money back in and refresh the account. Um, you know, the, the, the policy was that you can't deny a student a meal, so the account would then therefore go into the red. And then you're trying to collect that money, and part of the graduation requirement is that, you know, all of your fees and dues are up to date. So then it all became a big, you know, mad dash at the end of the senior year to get your, you know, your school meals done. So I think this is actually a great idea to, um, just eliminate that, you know, charging account, have them pay cash. It's a minimal fee for a meal. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Just for clarification, is it? The policy states you have to pay for it, you can't charge it. But that doesn't mean that, what's, what's the protocol for the student to do that? Like in the past, you could put, a parent could put twenty-five dollars, they can still do all that stuff. That's not changing. It's just the concept that you need to have funds, whatever it may be, cash or in your account, to be able to get the meal. That's basically what. cash or in your account, to be able to get the meal, that's basically what we're saying, right?
Students do have positive accounts, they're just not allowed to run into an deficit.
Right, which makes sense. And because the student's already been given a free meal, it, it's not that you're denying the student op- opportunity to eat.
You would be denying the second.
You'd be denying the opportunity to eat more.
So just applies the hobbits.
Yes.
Andrew, any students with negative accounts at this point? I mean, there shouldn't be any.
I don't thi- I don't think we do, uh, students with negative accounts, maybe we could check with, check with.
No, we do not, no, everything is in the positive, except for my account, and I didn't know that.
Uh-oh.
It's up to date. I think the kids would be using my account, to be honest with you.
That's it, good for, good for them.
Due to the, the need to have this for the audit this week, um, Mr. Chairman, would it be now to create a, uh, make a motion to waive the three readings?
It would be.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to waive the requirement for three readings, and move forward with a vote tonight for the re- for the meal charge policy.
So we'll take that as two, first, we'll do the vote to waive the three meetings. And so bas- basically what that does for, for you guys that don't know, is, your standard policies is, you know, we would, we would have a first reading, and then the next month, we would have a second reading, and then the third month, we would have a third reading, and then we would vote to adopt or deny the policy. Um, with this being a time-sensitive matter, um, Mr. Morgan is proposing that we just vote to waive those three readings, so then we can just vote to approve the policy as it is. Alright, so we have a motion, and a second. Again, being a hybrid meeting, we need to do a roll call vote, Greg?
Aye.
Dustin?
Aye.
Aye. Craig?
Aye.
Jay? Matt?
Aye.
unanimous, okay. Now, we'll entertain a motion to approve the meal changing policy change.
So moved.
Second.
Dustin? Megan? Motion made and seconded again, roll call vote, Greg?
Aye.
Dustin?
Aye.
Aye. Craig?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Matt? Okay. Alright, thank you. We can let Missy know that that has been voted in, and we can add that to our Food Service Audit. Alright, it's the time of the meeting for an opportunity for visitors to make statements and/or ask questions about anything that's been on the agenda. Ray, anything? Okay. Alright, we do not have to go into executive session, so I will entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote, Greg?
Aye.
Dustin?
Aye.
Aye. Craig?
Aye.
Jake? Matt?
Aye.
Six, six oh one.